Evening, welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, December the fifth. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Justin Kerewak to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Thank you. I currently believe it's to apply out of the United States. Yes, to probably just to say that's one nation, not like an individual. Look at you.
Our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is any statements or remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda tonight.
Good evening, David Clemmenson, O'Conne. I'd like to compliment the good work of the county's Parks Department. Our family loves O'Conne Veterans Park and Herman C. Michael Park. They're well managed, clean, spacious, and safe. As an example, you see the presence of workers doing things like taking out the trash. This is something simple, yet it's the sort of thing that seems to elude a neighboring park system. In these times when there's a lot to complain about in unsafe communities, we can be proud of O'Conne County's Parks Department, and we should express our gratitude for the leadership of Director Lisa DuVall. The Parks Department also exemplifies positive collaboration across the county. They run the Touch a Truck event and the bicycle rodeo and participate in the Fall Festival and Christmas Parade. There are instances of conservative Republican politicians claiming to support lower taxes during their campaigns. Then in office, they push for higher taxes and they move other tax rates around, which keeps the taxpayers confused. But it is commendable to see examples of local leadership maintaining quality services in a fiscally responsible way. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Anyone else? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? We will announce our holiday schedule, Monday, November twenty-fifth and Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, of a Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, or excuse me, Christmas Day and the day after. We will be closed for operations in all county offices. Also, Monday, January the first, for New Year's Day, will be closed, all counties. Also, this Friday from December, December the eighth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, we'll be closing all the offices as well for our annual Christmas lunch. With that, we'll need to move to our approval of minutes. This is for a regular meeting on November seventh, Town Hall meeting on November fifteenth, Senate Sitting meeting on November twenty-eighth.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Regular meeting, Town Hall meeting, and agenda meeting as submitted.
Second.
Motion is second to approval, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is the audit report for FY twenty-three, Ruston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you commissioners for having Ruston back for twenty-twenty-three to do your annual financial audit. So you, you all should have, I think, just a letter with you. I've got a presentation on the screen here we'll be working through, that letter there. I'll spend a very short amount of time on it, but most everything will be in the presentation. But before I get started presenting, I first want to thank you all, as I mentioned, for having us do your audit, but also thank your entire team, make you aware that the audit process went very, very smoothly. Obviously, we, we bother your finance team a little more than others, but we do visit the constitutional officers, all your department heads, Water Department, maybe a little more than some of the others, but a lot of different departments. And everybody has been very helpful in providing us. Like I mentioned, we ask a lot of questions, we request a lot of documentation, and they do that with a smile. So we appreciate that, and I wanted to make sure I, I thank them and thank you, thank you all before we get started. All right, so looking at a few numbers here. So the, the first slide here, we talk about our audit opinion, our independent audit report. It's found on pages one through three of your annual financial report. This is, of course, where we express our opinion, and I'm pleased to present that for twenty-twenty-three. You have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Nothing came to our attention during the audit process that would prohibit us from issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the financials. We do follow government auditing standards. Of course, with you all being a county, we do follow government auditing standards for our audit. These financial statements, big bound report, hundred and some odd pages here, are the responsibility of O'Conne County's management. Our responsibility as your auditors to opine upon those that they are not materially misstated, whether due to error or fraud. So pleased to present a clean opinion for the year. All right, in that, I mentioned several hundred pages there. In that entire report, there are only two statements. We've got a bunch of statements in there, but there are only two statements that bring all activities of the, of the county together in one full accrual basis of accounting. So that's going to include your general fund, which, of course, we'll talk about in a moment. It's your chief operating fund of the county. It's going to include your SPOLOs funds, it's going to include your water and sewer fund, all different funds of the county, all together in one. That's your government-wide statements found on pages fifteen through seventeen. Got a statement in that position on fifteen to sixteen, that's going to be like a balance sheet. You've got your statement of activities, which is going to be similar to an income statement. A few numbers from those statements. So net position, this is your equity, residual equity of the county here. So this is going to be your assets, less your liabilities, equals your net position. It's broken down into three categories, you can see on the screen there. You've got a three-year history for you there for the last three fiscal years. You've got net investment, capital assets, that's going to be land, buildings, equipment, less any accumulated depreciation on those assets, less any debt utilized to acquire those assets. At the end of twenty-twenty-three fiscal year, it was one fifty-seven, six twenty-two, seven ninety-four. Had restricted net position, that's going to be, a good example there would be your SPOLOs dollars. So you receive those, obviously you don't spend those before you received them. So this would be any funds that were received, but not yet expended. SPOLOs is just one example, but it's basically any external restrictions on those funds. The end of the year, that was sixteen million, seven sixty-nine, nine eighty-eight. And then your residual there is your unrestricted net position of fifty million, one twenty-two, eight twenty-nine. You can see there, at the end of the year, there's two hundred twenty-four million, five fifteen, six eleven as total net position. For the year, there was an increase of twenty-one million, nine fifty-six, eight seventy-five. And I've made a few notes there for each of those three years, just kind of explaining why one year may fluctuate some from the other. And you can see there, for twenty-twenty-three, the increases were largely in sales taxes and operating grants and contributions with similar expenses. So revenues were up, expenses were somewhat similar to the prior year, caused that larger increase in net position for this year versus the prior year. All right, looking at your general fund, I mentioned earlier, chief operating fund of the county. I know you all spend a lot of time, this is where most of your budget process takes place for operating the county. You see there, for the year, revenues increased three million, four seventy-four, nine eighteen, or about nine percent for the year. And I've listed there a handful of items that contributed mostly to that increase. Your property taxes were up just a little over two hundred sixty thousand. TAVT, Title Abilorm Tax there, increased two fifty-four, five oh one. Intangible taxes decreased four twenty-seven, five twenty-one. Local option sales tax, I mentioned just a moment ago, sales taxes. This is the local option sales tax in your general fund here, one million, five fifty-five, eight thirty-one. Insurance premium taxes increased seven twenty-two, seven eighty, and then interest, as we're seeing some rate increases and better returns on investments, one million, thirteen thousand, seven oh five. On the expenditure side, those increased one million, two forty-two, three twenty-three, or about nine, or three point nine seven percent. And I've listed a handful of departments there. You can see in kind of what contributed to those increases. Your law enforcement department, jail departments, both increased largely due to personal services, supplies and materials and capital outlay. There are some in the jails, you can see. On the public works side, those increased four fifty-one, one sixty-seven. Due again to professional services, some road maintenance and capital outlay. Next slide's kind of a, people don't like to hear me talk too much, so I try to throw a few pictures and graphs on here for you, a little more interesting than me. You've got a three-year history here in a chart form. You've got your revenues and then your expenditures and transfers out. I don't typically list your transfers in here. This is really just revenues, top line revenues and expenditures. The reason we include transfers out with expenditures is there are, from time to time, as you know, expenditures or transfers out that, that are for operating items. Like, for example, a transfer to the nine-one-one fund to help fund that fund are typically annual budgeted transfers. So we typically include transfers when we're looking there on the, plus you all transfer out for capital projects as well to your capital projects fund. So for the year there, you'll see twenty-twenty-three revenues, forty-two million, one hundred seven forty-two. And then your expenditures, transfers out, forty-five million, seven seven seven, one oh five. And again, that does include some transfers out for capital projects, there, future projects. All right, looking at the revenues and other financing sources. So I mentioned a moment ago, we did not include transfers in on that previous slide. This would include the transfers. So this is all inflows, basically right here, we're looking at. So this is going to be your revenues, we just talked about. It's going to be other financing sources, which would include transfers from other funds, you can see there at seven percent. Another other financing source that's listed here would be that sale of assets. That's going to be any capital asset proceeds, sales there. Those are typically smaller dollar amounts, as you can see. You can see that by, by and large, the largest part of the funding sources for the general fund are property tax at thirty-nine percent and local option sales tax. Over the years, last few years, you've seen your property tax percentage go down, your local option sales tax percentage go up. So that's just a testament to those sales tax increases we're seeing, we've been seeing over the last year or two. You can see there, sixty percent roughly of the total revenue sources are from those two forms. On the expenditure side, again, you've got expenditures and other financing uses here. So this, the transfers, I mentioned earlier, is about twenty-nine percent. Public safety is typically always your largest function, as far as your general fund's concerned. You can see there, public safety being twenty-three percent, public works at fourteen, general government at fourteen percent. Your water and sewer fund for the year had operating revenues that increased six sixteen, eight ninety-four, about four point eight percent. Contributed to that increase, water sales up three hundred seventy-two thousand, two seventy-six, sewer sales up to fourteen, four seventy-eight. On the expense side, operating expenses increased three thirty-nine, eight fifty-eight, or about three point eight percent. And again, some line items there, depreciation on your assets increased sixty-six thousand. Then you had personal services, it's going to be payroll and related costs, ninety-nine, nine fifty-two. And then just the cost of sales and services with an increase in revenue, you're going to likely see increase in operating costs there, one seventy-three, two eighty-nine. These next two slides, we talk about sales tax again. Except this time, rather than it being local option sales tax, we're talking about special purpose local option sales tax or SPOLOs. There is a schedule in your annual financial report that goes through specific details of projects that are approved. Of course, in-year referendums approved by the citizens. For the year in total, the county expended ten million, four sixty-five, zero three zero. Of those, three, three million, nine fifty-one, five oh three was from your twenty-fifteen referendum, and six million, five thirteen, five twenty-seven was from the twenty-twenty-one referendum. And again, the specifics on projects are listed out in that schedule as far as which specific projects. The next slide, one more sales tax. This is your special pro, your transportation, special purpose local option sales tax, or T-SPOLOs. Again, got some specifics on those. However, for this year, the only expenditures out of that fund were payments to cities of thirty, three forty-four, nine eighty-six for twenty-twenty-three. These next couple of slides here, I mentioned our independent audit report earlier. The, another product that's kind of, that's in your financial report, the only, there's really only three things in there that are our, our product as your auditor. You had your independent audit report, you've got your report on internal control and other matters, which is found on pages one-ten and one-eleven. And then you've got your report on internal control and, and compliance in relation to federal awards, which will be the next slide. So this report on internal control here, we do, because it's a government audit, we do have to consider internal controls and compliance. Pleased to present that for this year, we did have one material weakness, which I'll mention here in a moment. We had no significant efficiencies and we had no material non-compliance in the controls or compliance of the county. The one material weakness, I wanted, and I normally would just say the number and move on, but I did want us to talk a little bit about that because it's kind of an oddity that we've, we would have that and we're kind of required to have it in this, in this case. So there was a very, as you all know, a very complicated transaction related to the bond issuance last year, last fiscal year. Through some additional discussions with the attorneys, we decided we needed to account for a piece of that transaction differently. So that was an adjustment made during this current fiscal year that affected the prior fiscal year. And because that was a material dollar amount, we had to cite that as a material weakness because we were changing the prior year number. So it was not any kind of control, significant controlled efficiency or anything like that. So I wanted to discuss that, that, so you wouldn't be extremely alarmed by the fact that we've got a material weakness listed there. So I want to kind of clarify what that was. That was really just an adjustment, one single adjustment to the prior period. It just was such a large dollar amount, but it was materially misstated. So that's what, what that finding is about. Looking at the next slide, this is, as I mentioned, a report on compliance, internal controls over major federal programs. So this is required because the county expended more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds during fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. So in any given year, obviously, we've, I've talked about this the last several years because there's been a lot of federal dollars in the economy. And so the county has been meeting that threshold for some number of years. And likely may, may meet that one for several years as well. There's, there's some operating grants that are federal dollars that you've gotten every single year that regardless of, of any COVID monies, CARES Act or ARPA monies, you've always got some operating grants that are federal. So you're already kind of halfway or more to that threshold before you even consider any one-time or multi-year federal grants. But you did meet the threshold. So we did perform a single audit on the major, major federal programs. No material weaknesses were noted, no significant efficiencies and no material non-compliance in relation to those major federal programs for fiscal year twenty-three. I like to keep you all abreast of changes that are either happening in your current report or happening in the future. This one's one I've been talking about here for some number of years. We talked about leases last year, that was implemented last year. We talked about it probably for ten years prior to that, it seemed like. And this was another we've been talking about for some number of years. And this is on Sabitas or subscription-based information technology arrangements. So basically, this is software, for the most part, where you're purchasing on a contract basis. And what we mean by our subscription basis, I should say. So basically, you're locked in over a term. So if you enter into a four-year contract to subscribe to a software, as most softwares have gone to that, to that method now, you can't hardly ever buy the software and have it on your computer anymore. Most of it's all, you subscribe to it. So what you basically do is you pay that monthly, quarterly or annual installment. It allows you to have access to use that software. The minute you don't pay it, you no longer have access. That's kind of how everything's, most software is going in that direction. So when you're locked into a term, basically what Gatsby's saying here is, it's almost like debt. You're, you, you sign a contract for four years, you're going to be responsible for that for four years. So if you're at the beginning of that period, then you really owe that over that time period. So we're required to impute interest. And so that, as you make those monthly, quarterly or annual payments, there's a principal portion and interest portion. And then you, you capitalize that software as an intangible right-to-use asset and amortize that over the period of the, of the, of the contract. I know that's a lot of useless information, you probably don't care how to account for it, but I wanted to kind of let you know how that's, how that all works. The, the county did implement this during fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. However, it did not have a significant impact, but I will caution that it could have a future impact. This isn't just a one-and-done thing, just like leases last year. You implemented leases last year, didn't really significantly impact the county, but could still, every year thereafter, it's, it's a new standard that we'll always have to follow, not one that we do in one year. So the reason it didn't have a significant impact, there were, I think, I say it didn't have a significant impact. I think the finance folks would say it had a very significant impact. There's a lot of record gathering, a lot of coming up with all these contracts. We probably had, I mean, y'all probably looked at sixty, seventy contracts probably or more and narrowed it down to determine, do they meet this criteria? Is it a long-term contract? Because for short-term, it doesn't apply. Where are we in that contract? Is there, are there any agreements where I can turn, the county can terminate? And the, the third party who's, who's leasing it or subscribing it to you, can they terminate? If, if both can terminate, then it's considered short-term. All kinds of different aspects of this. Well, basically, they took that, narrowed that down. I think we ended up with technically about four that were applicable and that were potential to record. However, of those four, either they were small in magnitude or they were nearing the end of the contract. So if you think about even a million-dollar contract, if you're two months left on a five-year contract, that future liability is not real high. So materiality is a factor, you don't just record it to be recorded. So if it's immaterial, we didn't report. So there, there were a few of those that applied. But the reason I caution you is, if there was a four-year contract, you were nearing the end on it. More than likely, you're going to have a new contract you're going to enter to this next year, so it could be material at that point. So this, this will be a future eighty-seven, which was leases, and ninety-six, which is Sabitas are two significant standards that will affect us from here on out. So, so that was this year. Then you've got one coming that's not near significant. I'm happy to be sitting, standing here saying we, we've got a new one coming, but it's not like eighty-seven, not like ninety-six. And a little breath of fresh air here. This is one oh one on compensated absences, which is going to be your liability for accrued but unpaid vacation time. This standard is going to change, as you can see there, Gatsby sixteen, that was eighty-five Gatsby statements ago, many, many years ago, where this initial counting for compensated absence came from. So we're kind of updating that, changing some things on that, not overly significant. Actually, a few things in this one's actually going to reduce some of the disclosure. I don't want to get to say that very often, so I'm making sure to call that out. We're actually reducing some work on some of these, so, but there are some changes coming with that, but not overly significant. And that concludes my presentation. I do have the one letter there that I want to briefly mention. So that letter that you have in front of you there is what we call our Audit Committee Letter or our communication with those charged with governance. You all, of course, are that board charged with governance. This letter, while it being two and a half pages, there are basically two things in this letter that have changed from last time's letter. So I tell you that because I'm not going to go, y'all, y'all, like I'm tired of hearing you talk already. So I don't know y'all got a lot of business, but I'm not going to go through every specifics of this. Please do take a look at it. There's two things that changed here from last year. Most of this is boilerplate information that does not change. The two things that changed are the dates. And the other thing that changed is the new standards. So I just talked about ninety-six, but you had actually four different standards that affected this year. You had ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-six, and ninety-nine. The other three were just not near as significant, and they didn't really have any effect on the county at this current point. So, but I am required to let you know those new standards. The only other thing I'll say about this communications, my opinion, one of the more important items in there is the management rep letter, which basically is a letter I get from management. They sign that says that they have not intentionally withheld anything that may change my opinion on the financial statements. And we do have that letter in our files. So other than that, most everything else in here is some, just from required communications to you all, it's the board charged governance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Something comes up, I know there's a lot of information, if something comes up after the fact, by all means, reach out, we're here to help. Thank you all.
Now we'll do, move into our hearing and actions on zoning matters. Our first case is rezon request P twenty-three dash zero two zero four. This is Parkside Property Development L A, LLC. Rezone from AG to R two MPD to B two, twenty-four point five nine two acres for thirty-three eighty Hog Mountain Road, ten seventy-eight Steelwater Way. There is also a special use P twenty-three dash zero two zero three of the same.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-three zero two zero four and P twenty-three zero two zero three. Parkside Property Development LLC and Athens Construction Group Property Holdings LLC. This is parcel B zero five zero zero five A and a portion of parcel B zero five H zero zero one F. Uh, one property is zoned AG, the other is R two MPD. It is in the suburban neighborhood character area. This is a portion of the B two requested property that is proposed for special use. P twenty-three zero two zero three for a, a mini storage warehouse. Again, the small portion requested for that special use. Again, in the suburban neighborhood. And again, the request is rezone the property from AG and R two MPD to B two in order to develop a commercial subdivision planned to include small-scale buildings that provide shops, cafes, services and self-storage facilities. The applicant is requesting a special use approval to construct the self-storage facility under the proposed B two zoning. This is the principal use allowed in a B two zoning as a special use. This is the concept plan, this in your application packet. Version showing the outlined, uh, proposed special use area for the many warehouses. These are the representative photos in your application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Number four, the proposed park connector road connecting duly connector to Oconee Veterans Park shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits. Number five, at the intersection of proposed park connector road and duly connector road, the developer shall install a traffic circle slash roundabout or equivalent to service the project with the final design and location of such improvements subject to review and approval by the public works director. Number six, any self-storage building shall be brick and or stone veneer on all facades. Number seven, in addition to the proposed use exclusions in the narrative, the below general use categories listed in table two point one and two point two of the U D C are excluded. You can see those in front of you. And then the planning commission recommended approval with staff recommendations, but then adding two additional exclusions. Number ten would be no fast food establishments with drive-through services and number eleven, no convenience stores. And number two, EFS and Hardy Board may only be used as accent materials on the retail buildings. Thank you.
I hear from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Abe Abou Hamdan. Abe is fine, my last name is a little long. I am the Principal Engineer with ABE Consulting, Inc. Our office is located at twenty-four ten Hog Mountain Road, Suite one oh three Watkinsville. And we also have homes as well here. So thank you for allowing us to be here before you this evening. The staff has been excellent, Mr. Herring and his staff. We have worked through the process to get to what we would call a, a plan that's presentable, that's workable with, with the overall vicinity in the community as, as well. I would like to see if we can put the site plan up. So when we looked at this track, ladies and gentlemen, we, we have noticed that this is a, a parcel that's kind of sandwiched between the OVP park and a fifty-acre zone, commercial area that is within the park side right here. Of course, the property is bound by two major roadways. And we start thinking, well, what would be really suitable? Is it suitable for residential? Well, you've got the park that you've got a lot of traffic, lots of light, lots of noise. And then you've got the commercial here and you've got two major roadways. Well, it, it just didn't fit the glove, so to speak. It did not fit the performer. It's just not conducive to have residential. In addition, we didn't need more residential. We do have a, a large subdivision approved right next door or part of this parcel here. So we start looking, well, do we want to put a shopping center here? Well, it didn't make sense either. This is not really what we wanted to do. We wanted to put something that's, that's transitional, quality, small scale. And, and that's really where we came up with the footprint of commercial buildings, cafes, delis. You know, something that you can get a coffee, a cappuccino, you can get an ice cream cone or you can take and buy some sports shoes or, or shirts. And we wanted to cater to that. And so what we've done, we have laid out this project where we have these buildings that range from five thousand to sixty-two hundred square feet. We wanted to have the scale small, we want to have quality high. And but in addition, we wanted to make sure that is a transitional zone. It is merging to work with the area, not have big box or a, a big retail center. So that wasn't the intent. And as you could see, we've done that. And these, these buildings will be, will have two frontages really. So we wanted to make sure to cater to the park, but also internally to other folks that would come and, and be patrons to, to this development. So the other consideration we wanted to do, we wanted to put the parking lot and parking lots internally. So, you know, again, to minimize, minimize any effect visually, noise or anything else or lights presented over the parking lot. So that's why we did the central parking. So what you see, you know, landscaping, nice buildings. And of course, you, you've got some of those pictures, you know, as far as architectural presentation, representation. And so we will have a, a central core of green, the parking is surrounding that. And made sure, you know, we meet all the code requirements or exceed in, in many aspects. So the other parts that you see, what we're doing here, we're trying to stay scale-wise closer to really almost a new home size in Oconee County. So that's, you know, we're looking at that kind of scale. But we wanted to also make sure that we have the ability to utilize that and have it more pedestrian friendly. So part of this whole overall plan is we have a network of sidewalks. But one major aspect of that is a ten-foot wide multi-use path, you want to call it, that would connect to the park and all the way to here. So as we looked at the traffic patterns, we looked at, you know, beyond the quality and the uses that could be presented here. We wanted to make sure circulation, you know, as far as traffic movement, that's going to work well. And, and we, we understand we wanted to connect to the park for really a couple of reasons. One, to alleviate some of the traffic at the park and have that flow a little bit better through this project. And, you know, to fifty-three or eventually all the way to Mars Hill. So we have more than one point of entrance and exit for, for this development as well as the park. Now, this, this layout for this, what we call park connector road is set to meet or exceed county requirements or standards. And in addition to that, we have put a, a roundabout here that would serve as a, a good way to get into the project, but also keep traffic moving. As you could see, they do work, roundabouts, they, they in effect help move traffic better through, throughout any project or any traffic zone or intersection. So, um, but I just wanted to make sure, you know, see how we came about this to see, let's, let's make this more of a smaller, more quality. You know, there's no drive-through he's, there's no convenience stores in terms of pumps and whatnot. I mean, every possible, you know, intensive use we have eliminated, we have taken and excluded out of this request. So if you look overall, you will see because of the size of the home, excuse me, the size of the buildings on this property, the overall density or the overall coverage, lot coverage is about fifty percent. I mean, that's not what you see in a typical B two zoning district. You can put up to eighty percent coverage, but we don't have that here. The overall coverage for this project is at fifty percent for a little slightly less than that. So, and that, that was done on purpose because we want more greenery, we want more open space between the buildings. We don't want to feel like this is a big shopping center. This is more of an individual buildings, even the buildings could be one or two users, not just one big user. And do we need to talk about special user? So I just wanted also to cover the special use, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time. So the special use request is really under the B two zoning to have a, a self-storage facility. You'd have to go through a special use. And this is lot two here, it's about five point seven acres roughly. So one of the things, the things we have done is presented to you that all buildings will be all brick, all brick or all, you know, stone. So there's no metal facades, there's no EFS, there's no other requirement. We want something to be attractive, to be nice. So, and we have these two buildings here would be right here, excuse me, would be, you know, one to two story. And there will be air conditioning, heated cooled. So that's, that's on these, but all of the rest of them will be one-story building. Part of this request, we are presenting an opaque buffer all the way around this facility. So really from the street, you're not going to be able to see other than vegetation. And we have a privacy fence part of that too. I just want to make sure, let you know about it. Now, the, the other part that is important, that we did not have any doors or access doors that are facing any street. So all the access doors to those buildings will be from internal, from, from the inside of the development. So you will not see doors anywhere on here. Everything is accessed from internal side of the buildings and the development. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer any questions and if any, any time left, I'll have, I'd like to keep it for rebuttal.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezone or the special use? Mr. Taylor, speak against.
Yeah, good evening, Ian Taylor, thirteen thirty-one Deander Drive. I'm not against the development per se, I'm kind of sort of ambivalent to it. I just want to make sure that we're careful consideration is given to the self-storage portion of this unit. I've had some need over the last few weeks to talk to some law enforcement officers about some theft and whatnot at self-storage units. And it's come to my attention that crime at these self-storage units is a little bit more prevalent than I certainly understood it to be. And given that this will be right next to the, the, the park there and then ultimately with, you know, residential area. I just want to make sure that, you know, consideration is given to the safety aspect of it. And, you know, is, is it self-storage the right thing to have there? You know, I don't know if it's the, the best land use for the property, that's for the developer to decide. But I'm just not convinced that it's, that the location is in the best interest of the community at that location. So I just like to bring that to your attention, ask you to give that some, some extra thought. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against the rezone or the special use? Would you like a rebuttal on the, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I heard something about the crime, it's, it was hard to hear from that angle. But as I mentioned earlier about the special use, we will have a, a privacy fence, of course, it's a gated facility. So really it'll be very difficult to see or getting in, so more very secure in terms of that situation there. And, but other than that, I'd be glad to answer any question for the board.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment on these two items and open up any questions for Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just go over the special use conditions as well. And staff had recommended approval of the special use with our three standard conditions. The number four, a fifty-foot wide landscape buffer augmented with additional evergreen screening shall be provided between the proposed self-storage use in Oconee Veterans Park to provide opaque year-round vegetative screening to limit the visual impact of structures on the park. Any required evergreen screening plant shall be six feet tall at the time of planting. And then number five, all self-storage buildings, again, shall be brick or stone veneer on all facades. Number six, the proposed park connector road connecting duly connector to Oconee Veterans Park shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits. And number seven, again, at the intersection of the proposed park connector road and duly connector road, the developer shall install the traffic circle roundabout or equivalent to service the project with the final design and location of such improvements subject to review and approval of the public works director. And the planning commission also recommended approval with staff recommendations for that one. Thank you.
Okay, so we have seven conditions on the special use, nine conditions on the rezone plus two added by the.
That's correct.
So Abe, do you have any comment on the two added by the planning commission?
I, I think everything, Mr. Chairman, has been covered. And I just want to reiterate to you that even though a lot of folks have this issue about, you know, self-storage, you know, it's just a, a mental vision. But you've seen them, been done well, you have a two-story right there at three sixteen next to the, the hospital right there. So it's very attractive, you don't, and, and that one is even a stucco and EFS, it's a two-story building, then have even a brick or stone on it. So I just want to make sure, I'd rate to the board that, you know, it, it is our intention to make that a priority in terms of the looks and, and longevity of architectural elements utilized. And we do have a subdivision, there are several subdivisions, one of them is ours, you know, Northwest Woods next door. So it will be a great location for, and an amenity really for this area to be able to have a storage facility that you can, you can store. And everybody got access, I don't know how accumulate that over the years. There are no outdoor storage, there's no RVs to park, it's just simply all would be indoors, whether climate controlled or non-climate controlled. But other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners on these?
Want, uh, God, do you have, of course, we have the site plan for the rezone, but do you have a, I'm a site plan for the entire development goes out to Mars Hill Road?
No, sir. My apologies.
Now you can go back.
Let's, let's, yeah, that's right, this. Hang on, let's see where. Yeah.
Where duly connector comes into duly Boulevard, will that be, will that be just a regular stop sign or?
I believe, I believe that's a four-way stop, or I mean, a three-way, or, yeah, three-way stop.
Three-way stop, okay.
A stop sign, yes.
And so this duly Boulevard goes all the way through to Mars Hill Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, now my understanding is, is for any building permits of issue, duly Boulevard would have to be completed.
That's correct.
To Mars Hill Road?
That's right, yes.
So that's any building permit for any part of this rezone or any that was done, what, fifteen, twenty years ago?
Right, that's correct, yeah.
R two is actually that, that was what was rezoned.
That's right, that is the R two MPD, master plan development, that's correct.
And that's called for commercial development?
In, in that area, in that small, in that area between the connector and the Boulevard and Hog Mountain, yes. That is a commercial zone property.
Now remind me of that portion, does any of that have direct access to fifty-three or is it all?
It's all internal, it'll have access to duly connector and duly Boulevard with a proposed signal and signal at those two locations.
But there has not been a, a concept plan approved for that.
That's correct.
It's yet to be decided.
That's correct.
What could go? Of what could go in there? Just trying to get a flavor of what that whole area?
A, a, a shopping center.
Be like public?
I, I think they're looking elsewhere, but yes.
Well, no, I mean, when you say a shopping center?
Yes, sir, absolutely. A grocery store, a, a type of shopping center, yes.
That's what.
That, that's what was envisioned for that area, yeah.
Now, I think there's been some discussion, of course, this rezone happened many, many years ago, probably before anybody was on this, commission was on, commission, but are there traffic lights slated for any of these intersections with?
That's right, so a traffic study was done in two thousand and four, and it proposed a signal at this location, Dooley Connector and Hog Mountain Highway fifty-three. It also proposed a signal up at Morris Hill where Dooley Boulevard comes through there, and then it referenced another signal and improvements at this location based on the commercial that develops out.
The installation of those traffic signals were at the expense of the development?
Yes, sir.
And when are they supposed to be put in? Are they put in before the first building permits issued, or when, when do they?
Those will have to go through GDOT permitting and meet warrants. If GDOT will allow it to go in prior to building permits, then that's when it will be installed.
Otherwise, GDOT would make, wait until there's plenty of traffic.
That's possible, yes.
But if that access to the, to our park, Veterans Park, there's already made traffic right there, isn't it? Don't you think? I mean?
I believe people will use that as an exit, yes.
Now, I think that's a, going back toward Morris Hill Road, that would take pressure off of fifty-three for those people that are coming from that portion, part of the county.
Right.
Is that your opinion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
R two, I remember the right of previous litigation, so it's already designed as to residential.
There is a concept plan that was approved in the settlement agreement, and, and that, yes, that is correct. I, I'm sorry, no, sir, not tonight.
Can?
The, which part, the whole develop? Through here, th- these are designed to allow delivery trucks to work, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and if you look, yes, sir, if you look carefully, you will see that we have service bays. If there are two buildings, we have a service bay between them, so the dumpster, thank you, dumpster will sit right there with that dot, and this is where the, the trash truck and the recycling would come in and pick up from here. So this will be, remain clean, but access through here assure you will be adequate for the, for the trucks. Well, I'll try.
Do you have any idea what y'all were thinking of the other side?
Over here?
My colleague. Shopping center, so are we talking possibility that's going to be big stores, big buildings?
I really couldn't tell you about that. I know from the previous rezone, Mr. Commissioner, that there was a shopping center, multiple restaurants, ver- variety of commercial, but this is, you know, fifty acres right here roughly, that is zoned for that purpose. I couldn't begin to tell you what's going to go in there, and so, but it is commercial, like I said, could be a, a big box retail, or it could be more like Epson Bridge setting, you know, it's, it's, that's why we're trying to do the, the much, much less intensive here between the park and that, that, that zone. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Y'all consider having the entry to the storage from the connector as well, from the Dooley Connector? It seems to me that the entry to that could have been, it would lessen the traffic inside with some of the U-Hauls starting, and I know that there's not a lot of people, they're not jammed up trying to get into storage, but it seems like to me the entry could, could the entry have been on the connector instead of being internally?
We, we could do that, Commissioner.
I just think that if you, if you, if you had an entry somewhere right up, you know, up there where the stuff is?
Right.
Make the internal traffic flow a little differently. I don't know the, how the gating is for the, how far deep it goes in there, because you could have two or three vehicles backed up trying to get into that gate?
Right.
Slow the traffic up. It would definitely slow traffic if they're going around to stop at some of those other stores, but I didn't want y'all considered not, but it just seems to me it might be a possibility to have it on the connector, not inside the.
Yes, sir. So we could, we could, we could definitely accommodate that, that's not a problem, we could.
I don't think any of the commissioners think that's a good idea, it just seems to me it would unblock a little bit.
And it will relieve some pressure here, you know, especially if we have a lot of going on here, so.
Going to the, they're going to the storage, you just have one entrance.
Right. It, it won't change anything here, Commissioner, because all you'll see is a gate, and the rest of it will be vegetated and, and a fence.
A lot of cases, it's. My, I like to see less entrances onto the county road.
This would be.
Right, which is the county road. You're gonna have a lot, you're gonna have another driveway for somebody to come out, turn left or right, you just create more conflict. Having them in the slow area. That's something the public works, because where, where, they have certain distances from the entrance. And have driveway a certain distance. Have to be a certain distance apart.
And, Mr. Chairman, we'll be glad to consider that, the time with the, you know, public works director and the staff.
Um, one question, it looks like there's a, some type of a median there that might prohibit.
Are you talking about here, Mr.?
No, in, in the Dooley Connector, right outside of the, to address Commissioner Saxon's comment about the entrance. It looks like that you might have a, an issue in the median there, so that if you were coming in from Highway fifty-three, you may not be able to turn left.
Yes, sir, so. And this is a four-lane highway, so it can accommodate quite a bit of traffic here, too. It is designed to serve for that purpose, but i- if, if the board of commissioners wish for us to look at that, that's not a, something of an option, we will be glad to do that.
On, on the RT portion next to the storage units, how close will the closest house be to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you well.
So the, the R two, the housing portion that's right above the?
Okay.
Many stores, how close is the closest house?
Well, first of all, there's a fifty-foot buffer here, and the subdivision is really on the internal, so in other words, the roads are inside, so the houses, they're going to be closer to the road, so I would presume, you know, it'd be about a hundred feet away, at least.
Got one more question. The, the middle of portion area, both like, that'd be?
But they will be dedicated to the county.
We got it.
That's right.
We have a question. We'll entertain a motion on the rezone P twenty-three dash zero two zero four.
I'll make a motion. Two zero four. H E, R two, N V Z, B two, twenty-four point five, nine-two acres, thirty-two yard, Hog Mountain. And seventy-eight, still, still order light, general business. Say nine conditions?
Be eleven total.
Eleven total.
I'll look at that.
We have a motion and a second to approve reasonable request P twenty-three dash zero two zero four with eleven conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. And we'll consider the special use, P twenty-three dash zero two zero three.
I'll make a motion to approve P twenty-three dash zero two dash zero three as presented with the seven conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve special use P twenty-three dash zero two zero three with seven conditions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Chair votes out, motion carries. There's also a variance P twenty-three dash zero two three four attached to this. Unfortunately, there was some errors in the posting of signage at this location, and we'll have to bring that back on January the second meeting. That's the dude with the buffer on the residential side, right? Unfortunately, Abe, we're going to bring you back in January for that.
Thank you.
Our next item is special use P twenty-three dash zero two three one, this is Mark Thomas, changing conditions for special use case six-five-four-five-three-point-zero-four acres on Cedar Road. I believe Mr. Thomas is going to recuse himself from this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, this is special use P twenty-three zero two three one, Mark H. Thomas, owner. It's a portion of C zero-six zero-two-four C. It's currently zoned A G in the Ag Preservation Character Area. And again, the request, special use approval, six-five-four-five, was granted on July eighth of two thousand and fourteen, allowing a telecommunications tower not taller than one-hundred-and-fifty feet. The applicant is requesting special use approval to construct a tower not taller than one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packet showing the proposed monopole tower elevation, and staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition, and then number two, the telecommunications tower shall not be taller than one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet in height. The planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
We'll hear from the owner, thank you, the owner.
John Benke, eleven sixty-four Brookfield, Memphis, Tennessee. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening, and thank you for your consideration. The request is very straightforward, we want to increase the tower height by fifty feet beyond the current approval, and then we'd like to move the site uphill to the new location that was shown in the site plan on the same parcel to gain additional height from the topography. In the aggregate, the two changes will yield the height needed based on our RF engineering requirements, and this will provide robust service for many years to come to everyone in that area, and I respectfully request your approval for this request.
Anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments, open up to any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion.
Special use P twenty-three zero two three, Mark Thomas, any conditions for special use case six-five-four-five acres, Cedar Road with the two conditions.
Motion is second to approve variance P twenty-three dash zero two zero one. Zero two three one, excuse me, with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is variance P twenty-three dash zero two zero one, this is John Pullen, Jr., this is a variance to have a three-twelve roof pitch. Oh, this is a five-point-two-nine acres of eleven-oh-one Adams Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, this is P twenty-three zero two zero one, John Pullen, owner. This is located on parcel A zero-seven zero-one-eight-eight. It's currently zoned A G in the rural places character area. Again, the owner is requesting a variance from UDC section three-two-nine-zero-six-B-six, which requires all manufactured homes to have a pitch roof with a slope of at least four feet and height over twelve feet and width, a four-twelve pitch. This is the proposed manufactured home that is, is being purchased for the property, and staff recommends that this does meet the necessary conditions to grant a special exception with our one standard condition. Thank you.
And we'll hear from the owner. Yes, sir, come on up if you don't mind. You know, hey, thanks, very, very good. Anyone else wish to speak for variance request? Anyone to speak against? That will go ahead and close public comments, open up to any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a variance P twenty-three dash zero two zero one for John Wood Pullen, Jr., a variance to have a three-twelve pitch roof, five-point-two-nine acres at eleven-oh-one Adams Road with a one condition.
We have a motion and second to approve variance P twenty-three dash zero two zero one with one condition, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, various requests, P twenty-three dash zero two zero five, also had an error in posting, so we'll have to postpone that to January the second. Next item is text amendments. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have in your packets some recommended text amendments from staff attached as proposed amendments to Article three, six, seven, and ten of the Unified Development Code for your consideration. The planning commission has reviewed these and recommended approval, and I'll briefly go through these with you. Number one, guest house restrictions, currently our guest houses have the restriction that states for lots less than ten acres in size, guest house must be placed to the rear of the main house, or may be placed inside or front yard by special exception variance before the board. We're recommending that that change to five acres instead of the ten. It is in, in number one, and number two, both, that's the guest houses and the garage apartments. We're seeing more frequently those come before us, and thus would have to come before you for those types of structures that are being proposed adjacent to new homes on five-acre lots, and we feel like those lot sizes are, are, are big enough to support that location that's being proposed in the side or, or, or front yard, or front yard. So reducing from the ten to the five on both of those. Number three, we have standards for cluster mailbox units, these are federal standards that we want to mimic, so these are federal requirements by the post office that they, the developers install kiosks as opposed to mailboxes, so we are deferring to the federal requirements for that and are stating those in the UDC. Uh, number four, this is the number of parking spaces, a few years back, we put a maximum number of parking spaces as one-hundred-and-ten percent of the minimum, we're proposing to remove that, and we are, we're seeing a considerable number of variances to that effect, it come before you that would, that are, that, that, showing that they cannot meet that one-hundred-and-ten percent maximum, so we're proposing to remove that maximum altogether and go back to the original ordinance that we had, just providing for minimum. So we're proposing to remove that maximum altogether and go back to the original ordinance that we had, uh, just providing for minimum space requirements. Again, uh, number six is the minimum number of spaces proposed. Uh, that's, that stays and removing the maximum requirement. In our sign ordinance, we're proposing to define a mural. Uh, the mural sign is a work of art, either painted or otherwise directly applied on a building wall for sod. We have not previously had that definition in our ordinance. So that has been proposed uh, as a definition, uh, another definition under mural, uh, stating a large picture or image painted, constructed, or fixed directly on a vertical building wall. And then uh, we're also proposing that those be prohibited signs. Uh, so along with painted signs, uh, we're including mural signs and murals. And number ten, uh, this is our table seven point two. Uh, if you notice in the, in the red, we have a, a restriction currently that you're only allowed one um, awning sign per tenant. We're proposing that's changed to per entryway per tenant. So if a, if a tenant has a corner unit and they have two doors, uh, they would only be allowed one under our current code, one under awning sign. Uh, and thus you'd have an entryway that would not be signed, would not have signage. So we're proposing to amend that to allow one sign per entryway. And then I believe, uh, the next one is, scroll down. Yeah. And then, uh, number seven, uh, if you can barely see it, but it, it allows up to a maximum of three additional wall signs um, for each tenant. So one additional sign is allowed per second road frontage. And we're also adding in the language in red, or where visible from an adjacent road frontage or drive aisle. So if there is a side of a building that is visible from the road or from a drive aisle, this would allow them signage. The sign still has to meet our sign ordinance as far as square footage um, goes, uh, the size of the sign. Uh, but this would allow an additional sign uh, on the, on the building. And uh, and then finally allowing private streets. So, uh, section ten oh, ten uh, zero eight zero six uh, discusses private streets, and this would allow private streets in AG um, zoned properties. And those are the recommended, recommendations from staff and the planning commission has also recommended approval. I'll be glad to answer your questions if you have any.
Any questions on either text amendment? Have any public comment on the text amendment? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve text amendments, UDC, according to Article three, six, seven, and ten, and submit.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the text amendments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is consider appointment to the Family and Children's Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to appoint Stan Ruth to the position on the Family and Children's Services. Start immediately with a term expiring in June the thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Consider a report to the Farmland Preservation Committee. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discussing consider a ground lease with prime tower development to allow a hundred and ninety-nine foot cell tower at thirteen, uh, ten thirty Rankin Road and also at thirty-five hundred Hog Mountain Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a restatement of what we discussed at the previous meeting. This would be, um, two lease agreements with prime tower development to construct a hundred and ninety-nine foot, um, cell towers at the Rankin Road Collection Site and at OVP. The OVP site would be located essentially across from the maintenance facility and the collection site would be just outside the rear of the gate. Uh, these are a hundred and ninety-nine foot cell towers. Would carry up to four carriers on it as well as, um, public safety. Some of the main particulars on this, there's the initial period of a year um, for the applicant to do their engineering, gather the, um, lease agreements with the carriers. And then ultimately it would be seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars a year to the county for each site uh, for initial five-year term and then ten five-year renewable terms after that. A happy answer. Any questions you may have?
We have any questions on these ground leases? We have any public comment? Entertain a motion. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the ground leases. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discussing consider a new alcohol license and twenty-two, twenty-four renewal for Family Dollar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The Family Dollar Retail Stores of Georgia LLC have presented a new alcohol license for the retail package sale of beer and wine. The Family Dollar store is located at twenty sixty-one Hog Mountain Road in Watkinsville. The registered agent Derek Brunson has completed his RAS training. Their application is complete. They do request immediate approval because they would like to sell for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-three. And then additionally, I'd like to request approval of the renewal for two thousand and twenty-four since they are not on the list that was submitted to you last week.
Any questions? Any public comment on this item? I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the new alcohol license immediately and for twenty, uh, twenty-four renewal for Family Dollar. Uh, this is the next of the bills, I mean, what was the bill shopping? Make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the new alcohol license for Family Dollar. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is discussing consider award of the Eagle Tavern renovation bid.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, in, in the interim between the previous meeting and this one, um, the bids were tabulated and scored for, uh, Eagle, Eagle Tavern repair, um, utilizing the SLOs twenty fifteen historical fund. Um, this case Eagle Tavern and its restroom would have the Cedar Shake roof repaired. Um, the chimney on the Eagle Tavern itself will need to be repaired, and there is also additional siding that needs to be replaced on the Eagle Tavern itself, the Cedar. Um, Bain Development Group LLC was the top scoring responsible responsive bid with a total of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um, staff has requested authorized up to a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars uh, total with all budget amendments um, necessary for the life of the project. The reason for this is there is going to be likely some unknown additional, um, siding to be replaced once, um, additional pressure washing occurs and rotted boards are discovered. Happy answer. Any questions you may have?
This includes outside painting involved.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Just? We have any public comment on this item? I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, make a motion for, 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 for tavern renovation for a total of ninety-one, three, six, seven, eight, nine, forty thousand.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renovation bid. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. On the consent agenda, we need to take item number six, the board commissioner's meeting scheduled for two thousand and twenty-four off. We had to change the date because we had a conflict. Town hall, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Does any commissioner wish any other item to be removed? We'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the six, seven.
Second. A motion is second. All in favor? Thank you. On the board commissioner's schedule, we originally had the town hall meeting for January sixteenth. That one day is Martin Luther King Day, so the planning commission will be meeting in this chamber, so we're going to move it to the seventeenth. That's okay with everybody. We'll entertain a motion. A motion is second to approve the two thousand and twenty-four schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Do have need of an executive session to discuss litigation.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session for litigation.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Let's go back into regular session.
Got motion to second, go in regular session, all in favor?
Aha.
This is our last meeting of 2023, so Merry Christmas everybody. Mr. Saxon. We are adjourned.
See you till next.
Thanks.